Hello Yahya, praise the Lord. We've been in the church and we're going to meet again this year. This is the last Saturday of the season. We hope that this will be like a Saturday. Let the Lord bless us and bless our children. Since Christmas is coming up, let us pray for the Lord. The Lord has been here for us. This is a season, but there is a reason behind this season. So that's why we have to celebrate Thanksgiving. So today we're going to pray for him.
Thank you all for the prayer. I'm glad that we have a prayer meeting. I hope that we can continue praying for him. I hope that we can celebrate 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 him. I hope that we can redeem him. I hope that we can celebrate 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 him. I hope that we can redeem 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 him.
Thank you, Eben. Faith City Church is there. Part of the youth choir is there. So in the keyboard, Joyal Job is there. And SPD Albin, Joshua, Ronnie, Kristo, Christina and Aaron on vocals. So another program is like a few minutes worship. So after that, a few messages are there. Our youth members have messages. So other messages, Eben will be handling. So for the first 10 minutes, Kristo and all other choir members are invited for the worship. Over to the choir team. Thank you, Georgia. I'm glad we got another chance to be in the Lord's presence. I know this isn't a traditional Christmas occasion for us. For us, it's more about thanking Him for coming. Thanking Lord Jesus Christ for coming down for us. When He was born, He didn't have any riches or anything to boast of. But He came down for us in that small, dirty place. Not in a really good place or something. So we are here to worship Him, to thank Him for that. Joy to the world, the Lord has come. Let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven, and heaven, and nature sing. Joy to the world, the Lord has come. Let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven, and heaven, and nature sing. Joy to the world, the Savior's feet. Let hear their song in joy. Wind and flood, rocks, hills and plains. Repeat the sound in joy. Repeat the sound in joy. Repeat, repeat the sound in joy. Joy to the world, then we sing. Let earth receive the King. Let every heart prepare him room. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven, and heaven, and nature sing. Next, we are going to sing a song about the reckless love of God. How He chose to leave all the heavenly entities, heavenly pleasures and heavenly riches. And came down for us, for our sinners, to die for us. So we are going to sing once again for Him to praise His reckless love. Before I spoke a word, you were singing over me. You have been so, so good to me. Before I took a breath, you breathed your life in me. You have been so, so kind to me. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Oh, it changes me down, fights still, life found leaves the night denied. I couldn't earn it, I don't deserve it. Still, you give yourself away. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. When I was your fault, still your love fought for me. You have been so, so good to me. When I felt no worth, you paid it all for me. You have been so, so kind to me. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Oh, it changes me down, fights still, life found leaves the night denied. I couldn't earn it, I don't deserve it. Still, you give yourself away. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. There's no shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. There's no shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. There's no shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Oh, it changes me down, fights still, life found leaves the night denied. I couldn't earn it, I don't deserve it. Still, you give yourself away. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Before I spoke a word, you were singing over me. You have been so, so good to me. Before I took a breath, you breathed your life in me. You have been so, so kind to me. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Oh, it changes me down, fights still, life found leaves the night denied. I couldn't earn it, I don't deserve it. Still, you give yourself away. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. There's no shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. There's no shadow you won't light up. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. There's no wall you won't kick down. Lie you won't tear down. Coming after me. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God. Oh, it changes me down, fights still, life found leaves the night denied. I couldn't earn it, I don't deserve it. Still, you give yourself away. Oh, the overwhelming, never-ending reckless love of God.
Thank you, Faith City Choir Team. I hope that we can bless the Lord and bless our children. It's like a parade. We're celebrating Christmas. The first thing we think of is Easter. It's just the birth of the Easter. What we're doing is not the Easter. That's the reason. We have to pray for the Easter. That's what we're doing. There is no shadow you won't tear down. Mountain you won't climb up. Coming after me. When we come to the church, we don't have a sign. We don't have a sign. The only ones who know is that we worship. But the Lord is the cause of all this. We worship the Easter. We worship it. That's why we celebrate the Easter. Since Christmas is coming up, we have to celebrate it. That's the reason why we worship the Easter. We don't have to sit in the message. In the meeting, we saw the poster. We believe that the Easter is the birthday of the Lord. We believe that we have to celebrate the Easter. We believe that he is the God of all. He is the Lord of all. He is the supreme king, the great father, the great mother. That's why we pray for the Easter. That's why we pray for the Easter. First, we have to talk to our brother Aaron Saju. Aaron is a second-year farm d student. He is studying in the college of pharmacy. Aaron's family is active members of the Faith City Society. First, Aaron is the first part of the Lord's family. He is the one who has to pray for the Easter. How we can make the Lord see us in our lives. That's why we pray for Aaron Saju. That's why we pray for Aaron Saju.
Praise the Lord. Thank you. First of all, greetings to everyone in the Faith City Church. I hope all of you can hear me. Somebody give me a thumbs up. Yeah. So I'm going to talk from Isaiah chapter 9 verse 6. And for me, it's the first part. So unto us, a child is born. Unto us, the Son is given. And the government will be upon his shoulders. And I know everyone is in the Christmas mood. Everyone is probably happy because families around. Everybody has location and there's cakes and everything, there's candles. And so everybody is happy. And I know there are a lot of stories about the origin of Christmas. I don't want to get into that. But if we look at the root word of Christmas and we translate to English. What we get is Christ day. And so it's a celebration of Christ. And during Christmas, this is a verse that is preached about a lot. And so because it's one of the greatest prophecies about the coming of God in the fourth man. And when we read that verse, there's a certain shift in the weight of the personality of Christ. So unto us, a child is born. Unto us, the Son is given. And upon, and the government will be upon his shoulders. A child is born. And the child, personally, it changes to the government will be upon his shoulders. The government is not something that we associate with the child. If we have a picture of a pregnant woman, we show them a baby picture of Maryandra Modi, they laugh at us. If we have to go like people of another country, the army majors or the generals. And we show them baby pictures of them, they laugh at us. So there's a shift in the way of the personality of Christ in that verse. And that's something that we miss as a community. Christmas in the Amala Pram, what's Christmas in media? And like in our current society, like baby Jesus in a cradle, you know, with Mary and Joseph. Him and like, there's like a lot of animals in the manger. And that's become the visual that we see in media about Christmas. About the celebration of Christ. So it reduces, it's reduced like the importance and the presence of Christ now. And right, it's reduced the celebration of Christ to the celebration of a child. Right, it's reduced the celebration of Christ into a day of the year. It's reduced the celebration of Christ into Christmas songs and a man in a red suit. And plum cakes for some weird reason. And I don't understand the weird obsession with plum cakes. But then, yeah, so it's reduced the celebration of God's presence in our life. Of Christ's presence in our life. It says government, governance. What do you mean government in the beauty end? They have to lead us, right? Christ is there to lead us. And Christ is there to protect us. Christ is a shoulder that we can, that bears our burdens, right? And we glossed over that. When we celebrate Christ in Christmas, we glossed over that one. So where does our joy come from in Christmas? To the outside world, the joy in Christmas comes from temporary things, right? Giving gifts, vacations, cakes or eating a meal with your family. Temporary things are. But then, our source of joy celebrating Christ should be from permanent things. From the governance of Christ in our life. Right, the presence of Christ now. That's why we celebrate our celebration. This is not like, you shouldn't be happy during Christmas. Like you shouldn't be joyful during Christmas at all. This is not that. But I'd rather say harness the full joy of Christ. Harness the full power of the presence of Christ in us. Right, in celebrating Him, celebrate Him as a whole. Right, as like celebrate His governance, celebrate His leadership. Celebrate the times He has been there for us, you know? Celebrate the fact that when we're in war, when we're in famine. And like, you know, metaphorically in our life, that Christ has been there for us as a government. We have to celebrate that too, not just the part of temporary joy. And if our source of joy in celebrating Christ comes from temporary things. What difference is there between the celebration of Christ? As Christians, as children of God, and like the outside world? Our joy in celebrating Christ, if it comes from temporary things. We pray for the Lord. So I don't want this to have a connotation or anyone to feel like depressed after this words. But I just want to say, when we celebrate Christ, celebrate Christ in His wholeness, in His governance. In His governance. And you know, our joy should be different. Our source of joy should be different in Christ. And with that, I want to thank Eben and Senior Uncle and Georgia. And the one who gave me an opportunity to speak to you guys. And thank you for listening so patiently and God bless you all. Have a nice Christmas.
Thank you, Aaron. Now I invite Faith City Choir to lead us in worship.
My God, I am searching for you. 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 Yes, you are. Enne karugum. Ullam karathil ennai vaikyum. Talikka layave manilchaykum. Sneha maadum Esuve. Hattirannen vaichavina. Moolin kurukkalil vinadilla. Hrithirannen vaichavina. Moolin kurukkalil vinadilla. Kannil pannen nokeyadina. Tumbamunnu esillaa. Kannil pannen nokeyadina. Tumbamunnu esillaa. Kannin mani poh ennai karugum. Ullam karathil ennai vaikyum. Talikka layave manilchaykum. Sneha maadum Esuve. Vaanalekaa hari gillaga. Kaara peruva kaaya villaa. Vaanalekaa hari gillaga. Kaaya peruva kaaya villaa. Sneha meree narunna vira. Vaara peruva vinadilla. Sneha meree narunna vira. Vaara peruva vinadilla. Kannin mani poh ennai karugum. Ullam karathil ennai vaikyum. Talikka layave manilchaykum. Sneha maadum Esuve. Talikka layave manilchaykum. Sneha maadum Esuve. Talikka layave manilchaykum. Sneha maadum Esuve.
Thank you, PCT choir. Very much, I will talk to you again soon. Soon, we will share a message to Brother Kananjat Naman from Front Row PCT Church. Kananjat Naman is a member of Front Row PCT Church. If you want to tell about Kananjat Naman. He has a design in engineering design. He has graduated from university and is now a senior student in the institution. He is a teaching faculty in the Institute of Design. He is a professor of front row. Next year, we will meet with Kananjat Naman. Kananjat Naman is the next president of the 9th year of Christian Life. He is the Deputy President of the National Church of Christianity. How can we make this place a church? How can we make this church a church? How can we make this church a church?
Praise God, Hallelujah. God is wonderful. I pray to God for my salvation. I will pray a little more. The book of Christian Life, 9, 200 pages. We have a teacher. We have a mother. I was the first one to meet her. She is the Deputy President of the National Church of Christianity. The Lord of the仰圣神的神，the Lord of the仰圣神的神. Thank you, Hallelujah. I pray a little more. I pray a little more. Deputy President of the National Church of Christianity. We will look at Christian Life every time. Every time, Christianity or Christian life. It is a very personal thing. Our relationship is always with God. Our relationship is always personal with God. Christian Life is also with God. We are always with God. We are always with God. We have many examples. This is a very important thing. So, God is in our life. My example is that our each one of us is God. Deputy President of the National Church of Christianity. Or the Lord of the仰圣神的神. The Lord of the仰圣神的神. There are many ways. One person comes from God, another person comes from the world. The family is not the same. Whatever way it is, God is in our life. When we come to God, we cannot know him. My personal experience is like this. When I look at the world, I am like this. I am a good student. I am a student who is studying engineering topics. I am a student who is studying God. It is God's mercy. He is the Lord of the仰圣神的神 in my life. Thank you, Hallelujah. The same way, everyone who listens to me in the movie. I think they are the ones who enjoy God. Thank you, Hallelujah. So, what I said. Christmas is always a time for Christians. Christians celebrate Christmas. But we have to believe. How do we believe? I think. Wherever we are, we are in a workplace, we are in a school, we are in a college. Many of them are from different countries. Wherever we are. What is the difference between us and them? That is the main difference. If we help God, we help others. We need to be generous. We see our lives or our actions. If we help God, we help others. If we help God, we help others. What is the difference? I will add this message. If you have any messages, I will answer them. I will tell you a little more about the Lord. If we help God, we help others. 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 That is generous. I will say this. If we help God, we help others. Many of them are Christians. They are believers in Christianity. Only those who have faith in Christianity can achieve that. We have a purpose. Everyone is the same. When we pray, we pray. Some people pray, some pray. Some pray. Our church has a designated channel. On that channel, we are standing. On that channel, we are going. On that channel, we are standing. We are standing on that channel. We are standing on that channel. So, what I said. Every time, we have to learn about this book. This information, this information, we know. We have to be generous. We have to learn about this. Lucas's 444 says. They are generous. They have the best qualities. These generous people, we know. Abraham, Hebrews, they have it already. The book of Christian Life, 53. But even when Jesus came, they did not choose him. They forgot about him. Once we have known Jesus Christ. As Aaron said. A manifestation of the power of Jesus Christ is in our hearts. If we help them, we are generous. We apply them to our lives. This is what we have to say. A medium. We have to celebrate Christmas. We have to say Happy Christmas. We have to say Happy Christmas. We have to say Happy Christmas. That is how Jesus, January 25th or December 25th, was well done. Okay, December 25th was well done. That is how Bible is written. What is the purpose of Christian Life? We have to say it to our friends, our colleagues. Everyone can say it. That is Deputy President of the National Church of Christianity. The Lord of the仰圣神的神. We have the best qualities in our life. We have the best qualities in our life. We have the best qualities in our life. If we explain it, that is the biggest purpose. When we think about going to Christian Life. We have to do something. You have to be generous. You have to be generous in your home, in your neighborhood. You have to live in a place. Then you have to be generous. This generous, this faithful God. If we help this Christianity or Christian life. If we help this Christmas. We can use it as a cash point. I hope you will believe. This small Christmas message. I hope you will like it. I hope everyone will say it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kananjat. Over to PCT choir.
God said his son. They called him Jesus. He came to love. He and forgives. He lived and died. To my pardon. An empty grave is said to throw. My Savior lives. I can pray tomorrow. Because he lives. All fear is gone. Because I know. He holds my future. And life is worth living just because he lived. Because he lived. I can pray tomorrow. Because he lived. All fear is gone. Because I know. He holds my future. And life is worth living just because he lived. I seem to hold a newborn baby. And feel the pride and joy he brings. But greater still. The car was sure ends. This child can face a certain day because he lived. I seem to hold a newborn baby. And feel the pride and joy he brings. But greater still. The car was sure ends. This child can face a certain day because he lived. Because he lived. I can pray tomorrow. Because he lived. All fear is gone. Because I know. He holds my future. And life is worth living just because he lived. And life is worth living just because he lived. The young boy, yes, he is born. He is born, he is born, he is born. He is born, he is born. He is born, he is born. The young boy, yes, he is born. He is born, 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 he is born. My God, I am blessed. I am blessed. Beauty, love, happiness. I am blessed. I am blessed. My God, I am blessed. I am blessed. Beauty, love, happiness. I am blessed. I am blessed. I am blessed. I am blessed.
Thank you, PCT Youth Choir. Soon, we will give a message to Kanadi. Brother Edwin. Edwin is a member of Kanadi Church. He has graduated from British Columbia in 2021. He graduated from British Columbia University. He is a junior in British Columbia. He will give us a message next year. Over to Brother Edwin.
Hi everybody, can you hear me? I made a presentation for this time. So, I hope I can share the screen.
Yes, you can.
Just let me know whether you can see the screen or not. Is it visible?
Like not, we can't see the presentation. Ah yes, no, it's okay, visible.
Okay, just a second. Are you able to see the slides? Still visible, right? Just you are able to see the one slide or the whole?
One slide, one slide. One slide, definitely.
Okay, got it. So, I welcome you all today. As you all know, today is 25th December and it's a Christmas around all the world. But for us, we believers born again Christians, we celebrate it in a different way. And for those of the people who are new to born again belief or who have been recently converted. I'm not sure how many are there, but I would like to start this sermon by. By sharing you with the title of this sermon that is Son Given, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. I've taken this from this verse which has been given Isaiah 9:6 as a theme for this sermon. So, but at this instance also, I would like to share like how we can achieve that in our life. 1 Timothy 1 verse 4. It says, nor give heed to fables and endless genealogies which cause disputes rather than godly edification which is in faith. So, that should be our foundation. And I would like to move on for the next slide without wasting any time. So, first of all, let's see the history of this chapter. Isaiah 9:6 verse has been taken from a chapter which Isaiah prophesied for Israelites. So, it's a part of the prophecy and we should thank Jews because of whom we got Jesus Christ as our salvation. So, God in his foreknowledge, in his divine wisdom. So God, in his foreknowledge, in his divine wisdom, he already prophesied through his servants that a savior would be born. But Jews were less concerned about it and more concerned about earthly manifestations. But when we move on in the slides, we will encounter those things which I will point out. But let's see what else this verse is about. So it's about an information for Israel, the Jesus reign setting free, setting them free to eternal peace, which they totally missed out. Now, this verse which has been taken from Isaiah chapter 9, it's telling about two places, that is Zebulun and Naftali, which was the most sinful regions or one of the most sinful regions in Israel at those times when Jesus was starting, going to start his ministry. So first of all, when he heard about John the Baptist being executed, he went to this place and he casted out demons. He set free all those sinners who were under the dominion of evil spirits. So that was the starting of the ministry of Jesus. And then what we find out that Jews totally missed out, that King Jesus, Prince of Peace, is the monarch, is the only monarch in the spiritual realm. So when they were living all, like all this divine life and they were all under the auspicious protection and the auspicious reign of the God Almighty, they totally forgot about all the prophecies which has been given before, in the past years. Now, what are the similarities with Jews? When we are living as a Christ, born again Christ and believers, what is the similarities with Jews? We will find that when in our day to day Christian life, we tend to focus on physical science, immediate gratification of security, appeal for carnal leaders, appeal for idols, any kind of image. It can be anything, whether it is monetary, in the monetary terms or whether you name it in the materialistic terms, then we have a repeated rebellion attitude. Are these, are these kind of factors which I have mentioned right now? Are these terms or these factors, anything resembles in your life? It is a time to ask you a question, yourself a question and a foot for thought. Is it carnal or spiritual to look for manifestations in the physical realm only? What do you think about that? Just ask yourself that question. So whole verse which has been given for this Christmas, when we are talking about the born, the birth of Jesus Christ, how we have to celebrate or how we have to relate to it? We have to look for these signs, whether do we have these tendencies to live a life in this world? Moving ahead, now when we are talking about the manifestation of Jesus Christ in our life, we have to always keep it in our mind that it has to be an inner manifestation. What do you mean by that? And to us, a child is born, to us a son is given. How much do you mean about that? When you tell this in front of the world, I don't know, that like as the prophecies has been given and it has been prophesied, that during the end times, it will be very, very difficult for Christians and it will be terrible to live a life in this world. How much of, how many of us, rather I should point out, like how many of us are daring to go out in the world and say that we are Christ and we believe that only Jesus Christ is the Savior? Only God Almighty is the God in this world and no other gods are gods. How many of us can say that? Now let's see, and why I am asking this question is because first we have to learn to develop and you know, you have to establish the basics in your Christian life. Only then you can go outside the world. If you are not immune or if you are not tough inside your body, you cannot go outside in the world and you can, you know, you can face extreme situations or weathers in this world. So in the same way, your Christian health matters when you live in this world. Now what are the requirements for the fulfillment of this verse? I'm not going to, I'm just touching this points, I'm not going to going in detail for this. So the requirements are worldly realm. In worldly realm, spiritual versus carnal, that is spiritual represents Christian believers and the carnals are the Gentiles. Number two, the heavenly realm, heavenly beings, fallen angels versus godly beings, trinity god. And the third is the, the third is the churchly realm, that is the righteous believers versus adulterated believers. Why I have taken this churchly realm also as a, in the count is because apart from we all know, like we all know about worldly realm and heavenly realm, but we have to also right now consider this, that in the church also, we have to create an environment and we have to look out for the, 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 the foxes which are coming in the skin of sheeps. Now moving ahead, in the churchly realm, steps to attain righteous believer or mature Christian badge. How to get to a level when you can relate to being a mature Christian? According to me, and if you are ready with your Bible, you can take these verses which has been, which is showing here and it will help me a lot. So according to me and what I analyze and what, how I read the Bible and what I found out, according to the God's guidance, I've pointed out these criteria which I think is very necessary to build up a foundation. That is number one, alignment of life according to the word of God. In Daniel chapter 12, verses 10, I've got it, so it says, "Many shall be purified, made white and refined, but the wicked shall do wickedly, and none of the wicked shall understand, but the wise shall understand." And the second factor which I, which I, which you can see here is fueling self, that is yourself with spiritual energy of force or power. In Colossians, chapter 1, verses 11, it says, "Strengthen with all might according to his glorious power, for all patience and long suffering with joy." So Paul is asking us to strengthen ourselves. Luke 21:36, you can read it at home. And number, let's move on to for the third factor, that is the willful submission of life, the whole yourself, this when you're talking about yourself, spirit, soul and body, under the supervision of, supervision of Christ. Matthew 12:50. See if somebody can take Matthew 12:50. It says, "For whoever does the will of my father in heaven is my brother and sister and mother." And the fourth factor is exercising power and executing God's will, which we can see in Ephesians, chapter 1, 19 to 20. Defending, retaining the faith, hope, power and anointing which you have received. So when you see in 1 Timothy in chapter 4, 12, what does it says? I think many of the youths can relate to it. In that, Paul is giving instruction to Timothy. So, has somebody taken out that verse? "Let no one despise your youth, but be an example to the believers in word, in conduct, in love, in spirit, in faith, in purity." So I would like to also share one story when I'm pointing this last factor, being in a Christian and born again belief or leading that life. I was attending, I've just, during my college days, I went to see one of the matches of my friend. It was a boxing match and he was having this selection process going on for his national level. So one of his, after his match, he won and one of his previous coach or the previous champion, he came there and he gave a speech. "See, you are already a winner, you are already a champion, you're going again there. So what is necessary for you?" So everybody was like thinking about it, what is, what is necessary? Once you have won the championship or once you have attained a level of a champion. So he said that after winning a championship, you have to defend it, you have to retain it. Because the fight is going to happen again the next day after you win it. So that day when you have won, you can enjoy all you want. After that, the very next day, the fight will all, will begin the same, in the same manner. So we have to remember this. Once you have attained a mature life or mature Christian life, you cannot live without any concern. You have to build resistance and you have to keep on training yourself so that you can defend it. With these words, I would like to conclude and are you, this is my foot for thought in the last, in the end, are you ready for the monarchy of Yahshua Messiah? God bless, thank you.
Thank you, Edwin Zeta. Over to Dr. Thomas Sargent.
If you follow Yahshua, you will follow him. If you follow him, you will follow him. My parents, my mom, everything, a complete submission. A discipleship is very important. When our friends live, we should follow them. But our primary goal, when we reach the other world, we should go forward. We should say it's a piece of cake. This is what we feel, everyone knows, a part of me, I am Yahshua. If you are not worthy, I will leave.
Please God. Please, I will send a message to Sinny Joyce Matthew.
Since we are in the midst of Christmas, we have to pray for our youth fellowship. We have to pray for the children of God. We have to make a Christmas wish. A contradictory approach is what we, when we make a Christmas wish, we think. We have to make a wish. Do we pray for Christmas? Is it a birthday? That's a big question. Last week, when I went to my wife's house, someone came to my house and said, "Merry Christmas." I said, "We don't pray for Christmas." It's not a birthday. Then I went to my wife's house and she said, "It's not a birthday." That's because she's living there. She said, "You're not living there." That's not true. We don't know the date of birth. If we know the date of birth, we'll pray for it. That's not true. If you ask me, I'll say, "Is it a birthday?" I said, "If you pray for my daughter, we'll pray for her birthday." It's not hard. But it's a question. One day he was born, either in December or in March or in April. There are two possibilities. Either in April or December. If it's in December, we'll have a chance. Because Roman government senses winter. It is very clear. But one day he was born. We can celebrate Christmas, not the way the world celebrates. As our brothers and sisters think, we're seeing the world, they pray for it. But we're having a cake. But we pray for Christmas. There's a chance to propagate the great message of Christmas, the great epiphany. I'm trying to tell you a good Christmas. You can say it, even if it's a joke. It's not a joke. But we're very busy. I'll say my conclusion. We're giving children a lesson. We're giving them a lesson. They're learning. He's the president, the leader, the sovereign, the sovereign of the world. They're named after him. They're learning about him. They don't have a future. They're very strong. They're learning about him. They don't have a future. We're giving children a lesson. It's a different thing. Christmas gives a very unique message, very, very unique message. Message from God, message from Mary, message from Joseph, message from Jesus Christ. Four messages, four sentences. First, the Christmas message is all destroyed. The greatest treasure of heaven was Christ Jesus. The Father was willing to lose him. That was the greatest message of Christmas. Your children are believing. They're not going to live their life. They're giving them a lesson. It doesn't mean we're giving them a lesson. How much love do we give them? Our children are proud. We're helping them. They're giving them a lesson. The greatest love this universe has ever witnessed, the love of Father. The whole universe is in control. Your children are the best. They're the best. Father was willing to give him down. I told you. Crucible criminal Nepal America. That was the message that God gives. Mary also gives a message. She had a treasure of chastity, here virginity. She was willing to lose it for the sake of the kingdom of God. Her reputation, respect, all destroyed. I don't think even ever a virgin, a girl will do that. You don't know theology. You only hear it. It's not in your mind. How do you experience it? You can understand. But if you do, you'll die. That is sure. That's what I'm saying. Your wish is done. That is the greatest message from Mary. I'm telling you a good message. Life is a big thing. Destroy it. You're a little kid. Joseph said something else. He's a Mongol. But Mongol, a good Mongol. That was not a good news. He said, "Everyone who goes to the temple is very happy." He's happy. But Joseph, you know. A good thing. A good thing. It's not a bad thing. That man should be respected. If a man is respected in this world, that should be Joseph. He's a kid. You should help him. Then silently, he's talking to someone. He's a child. He's dead. He's gone. A silent witness for the sake of the kingdom of God. I'm telling you, in this world, you should be Joseph, but we forgot him. He's dead. He's not alive. He's not alive. He's a saint. I'm telling you. Joseph is a child. Neglected and forsaken for the kingdom of God, the great message that Joseph gives. He was willing to lose everything for the mankind. He's a child. He's dead. So I'm shooting. In Greek it says, "Kanosis." He emptied himself. So I'm shooting. Even in the world. We don't see it in Christmas. We don't have children. This is what people think. He's a child. He's a child. Lucas said, "He's seen it." He didn't say it. He didn't say it. He's seen it. If he goes to the temple, he'll die. A child. He can't find a place to die. I'm telling you. He's dying. Everyone's dying. He's a saint. He's going to die. He's going to die. No space. He's struggling. He's not going to die. He's going to die. He's going to die. He's going to die. He's going to die. Grass, trees, flowers, everything. He's a child. Our children are very dear. They're a great children. When you ask children, they don't care. They don't believe. Christmas is a message. We're giving children a lesson. We're giving them a lesson. They're learning. If you look at it, a Bible says, "He's a saint. He's a saint. He's like a coin. Everything is good. Everything is good. Christmas is a great hope. A great blessing. He's like a coin. He's giving me everything. When I'm living, everything I do, he understands me. I'm happy. We're giving our brothers and sisters a gift. He's like a coin.
Check.
"Pray for a prayer. I don't have a prayer. Pray for a prayer. I don't have a prayer. I don't have a love. I don't have a prayer. I don't have a love. I don't have a prayer. I don't have a coin. I don't have a coin. I don't have a coin. I don't have a love. I don't have a coin. I don't have a coin. I don't have a coin. I don't have a love. I don't have a coin. 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 I don't have a love.
I'm praying for Christmas. I'm praying for Christmas. I'm inviting my seniors. My seniors will be doing the concluding prayer and benediction. If you're here, next Saturday, 2022, first meeting, January 1st, is a Saturday. If God wills, there will be change in our meeting schedules. Timing, some may change. And more events will be added in the meeting. All are invited for the same. Over to Sinan Uncle for the closing prayer and benediction.
I'm praying. I'm praying for Christmas. I'm praying for Christmas. We're giving them a lesson. I'm praying for my children. I'm praying for them. I'm praying for them. It's a great message. If you don't pray for them, 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 if you don't pray for youth leaders, if you don't pray for pastors, if you don't pray for the clergy, if you don't pray for the community, if you don't pray for the Lord, if you don't pray for Jesus, if you don't pray for the Lord, if you don't pray for the Lord, if you don't pray for the Lord, if you don't pray for them, amen. If you don't pray for them, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Karta Vayeshu. Be good. Amen. God bless you.